One announcement I'd like to make is it's very difficult during a Zoom meeting to take minutes if you don't state your name, if you make a motion, and if you're second, you need to state your name because it's very, very difficult. We've done this before, but you want the minutes to be current. So if you all can do that under these unusual circumstances, I'd appreciate it. We need to discuss and approve the regular quarter meeting minutes of March 11th. I need a motion and a second to approve them as presented.
This is Pat. I'll move to approve.
We need a second.
All right, I'll make a second.
Brian, okay, Brian's second. Thank you. Okay, we want to... Is Linda on? I don't see her.
Linda, yes.
Okay, great.
She just doesn't have her video showing us.
Okay, Ms. Linda, would you give us the treasures report, please?
Okay. From our $10,000 budget, now have $8,326.82 remaining. We amended our budget to take $3,000 to put towards the sesquicentennial line. Can y'all hear me?
You can hear me.
Okay.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the treasures report.
This is Pat, so moved.
Okay, this is Sandy Garrison's second.
You made the motion.
Pat Russo, and then Sandy seconded it.
Okay, thank you. I didn't hear you, Pat. Sorry. Janet, you want to talk about the presentation of the new slate of officers for 2021?
Well, we're still hunting. There's like six people we have contacted, but they were not interested for very good reasons. They were taking other positions within the county government. And we're still... I've left a lot of messages. A lot of people were not home. Like, I tried to call Linda for one and some others, and hopefully they will call me back, and we'll keep digging.
Okay, very good. So that means we'll have a... At the November meeting, we will have a slate, and then in December, we'll hold a special meeting to vote on that slate. Under Committee Reports, Action Items, Executive, I have a guest. Some of you have met Kimberly Amy from TechStop before, and you're muted. Kimberly, can you unmute?
Yes, Betty, can you hear me okay?
Great.
Yes, awesome. Okay, so mostly, thank you for inviting us to your meeting. I've also brought along our Sinten area engineer, he's one of the big bosses, Robert Isasi. And to start out, I'm actually gonna... His office is the one responsible for managing this Copano Pier removal project. So he knows a lot more of the good details. And then I have a small update for you on our video project that I think I've talked to several of you about. And I think you've still been in contact with a lady by the name of Debbie Schneider, who works for TechStop out of our productions group. But I'll give you a very brief update on that after Bob kind of goes over the basics of the project. And, you know, any questions any of you all have. So I'll be ready?
Ready.
Okay, I'm muting myself now.
Hi, good evening. My name is Robert Isasi. I'm the area engineer. I'm based at the Sinten area office, of course, part of the Corpus Christi district, responsible for San Patricia, Aransas County, and Rio Grande County. Just want to give you a quick little update on what we're doing right now at the Copano Bay fishing pier out that way. I know if you look in the paper, we were supposed to start at the end of August, August 31st. We were delayed on the start because of Hurricane Laura. Our contractor, Russell Marine, was preparing to mobilize to be here on time. But in late August, due to Hurricane Laura, their offices in Chatsworth, Texas, which is pretty close to where they were eventually hit, they needed to prepare, batten down the hatches, literally, to prepare for the hurricane. And so they asked us if they could delay it a week. So they delayed the week, and everything turned out okay. Their barge, their push boats, their equipment and their labor personnel have all arrived. They're out there. They were out there yesterday. And they've already started setting up our SW3P, which is our pollution mitigation measures. They set that all up yesterday. They're gonna start with the removal on the south side first, remove the power, the old power connections, those old timber posts, and start removing at the abutment. We're aware of the historical abutments that are demarked, and they're to be protected. There's one on the south side, and there's two on the north side. And we're actually gonna leave the timber abutment that's existing on the original fishing pier. They had asked, our contractor had sent in an RFI, request for information, on what to do about that timber abutment. And we decided it was best to just leave it in place because we don't want the potential for any of the bathrooms or all of the soil that's next to the bathrooms to kind of go down into the slope. So we left that existing berm up or that retaining wall up. So that's what we're planning to do. They're gonna start on the south side. They've already started. And they're gonna work their way going piece by piece north. And then eventually, when they finish up at the intercoastal, they'll start on the north side and then work their way out as well. So...
All right, I have a question for you. I was out there today on the north side. And if you're looking southbound, they have pulled up a bunch of the timbers and placed them on top of the shellcrete structure on the east side. And that was supposed to be left intact.
I think what they were...
So it has crumbled to some degree.
Okay.
Betty, you're cutting out a little bit.
Yeah.
That was in the plans to be protected, Betty. So if the contractor has done that, that's something that TechStop will address as soon as we can.
Yes, I'll get with my project manager here today to go out there first thing in the morning to take a look at it. What they might have been doing, they might have been putting in protection around it to kind of demark that area as like a no-go zone and protection. And so they might be working near it just to set up something around it. Now, they're putting stuff, debris or whatever on top of it. That's a no. We don't want any of that. So I kind of heard part of what you said. So I do need to take a look closer on what exactly they did. But we do want to protect that area. And if they're starting the ball, they're starting off on the wrong foot. We definitely want to get after them on that and make sure that that area is protected. We've talked to them about it, and they should know better. So if there is something like that, we're definitely gonna take care of it.
Okay, I'm just worried about when they remove it. I mean, those timbers are so heavy when they remove it. It's already caved in somewhat. Cave some more. So do take a look at it if you would and get back to...
I will. And if I could get your information or if you can get that to Kimberly, I can get a few photos of exactly what we're seeing out there. I can tell you about what we're planning to do. And if they did mess up and what we're gonna do to mitigate the problem, if there was some sort of issue there. But I'll convey that to Kim, and she can get that to you. And if you want to share with the rest of the group, we can totally do that.
Yeah, absolutely, Bob. I'll get them an answer once we figure out what happened.
Yeah, I gotta look at it.
I'll get them.
So this is on the north side. They did some work, and they kind of maybe, maybe damaged some things. Or actually, they set some timber posts in, and you're worried about when they pull it out, what the outcome will be. Is that right?
They laid the posts on the structure.
Got it. Got it. Okay. Thank you. I'll look and do it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
Any other questions on the project? If you do have any in the future, let me give you my email address. You can send me an email. You know, you don't necessarily need to go through Kim. You can email me directly. My email address is the same as my name. It's robert dot... There's a little period there in between my first and last name. Robert dot Isasi, and it's spelled I-S as in September, A-S-S-I, all S and M, at text dot T-X-D-O-T dot gov. That's my email address. If y'all want to email me directly, if you see something, you're driving by and you have a question, I'm very willing to answer anything, any questions you might have. Okay?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you all. That's it? That's all I got?
All right.
Started, if you want to...
Thank you.
I mean, it's a good wild project. So if you need an update six months from now or something like that, just reach out to Kim, and I can give you an update or, you know, something like that. Okay?
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
All right, are you ready for a video project update? Very brief. But for those of you that may have been involved in some point of it, and even for those of you that this is the first time you're hearing, one of the things that I was able to do when we were developing the project and completing the environmental is I was able to reach out to some of our folks up in Division because TechStop has all these different offices. And one of our offices actually specializes in creating videos. And so this person I've talked about, Debbie Schneider, is actually a professional videographer. She's made a living working for TechStop, making videos about whether they're education or outreach or just a whole variety of different things. But when I reached out to her, she was really excited about this project. Even right now, I'm not quite sure what this video is gonna look like. I'm not quite sure if this is gonna be something that's heavier on a historic significance side or heavier on a community side. But what I've expressed to her is that this is a story that kind of needs to be told at least a little bit. This is not a documentary. This would be something like maybe a five or 10-minute video that ultimately would be available to the public, that we could put on TechStop website. And that video would be a moment in time for what this pier was right now. So the fact that so many people have grown up fishing on it, the fact that so many people have grown up, it being a part of the landscape, it's all its significance as one of the first causeways in this area. Those are all things that we want to capture. So I just wanted you to know that that project has not died with COVID. It is still going. It's had to kind of take a backseat as we kind of reevaluate how we're gonna do interviews, how we're gonna collect video footage, how we're gonna collect and put together these different pieces. I spoke with Betty, or not Betty, with Debbie. It was just a week or two ago. And she wants to move forward with interviews, but she's still waiting on guidance from TechStop, from her bosses, about how she's gonna be able to do some of that. So as soon as we hear something about how we can move forward and how we can kind of collect some of that information, I'll be contacting you again, or she will be. Additionally, we did hire, TechStop was able to hire, a company that collects drone footage. And we were able to collect drone footage of the pier prior to the start of construction. So we have footage prior to. The plan is to then collect additional footage during construction. And then finally, when it's completed and all the equipment is moved out, we would collect footage basically at the completion when it's, you know, open water. The idea being is that that footage could be used in a number of different ways. Again, it's sort of evolving. It's a work in progress. But, you know, we'd always rather have it and not use it or not fully use it than have never collected it. So that is something that we have. That's all I have to update you about that particular project. Do any of you have any questions?
So Kimberly, this is Pam Stranahan. We've talked about it and invested, I've visited with Debbie too. But I hope there will be copies available for both the Historic Commission and the History Center have copies in our archives or to be able to use in exhibits down here too.
Absolutely, absolutely. And it would be very easy to put media like that even on a CD or a flash drive and be able to provide it to y'all. It would be considered kind of for the public, for, you know, for your use. The more people that use it, the more people that see it, the more worthwhile it was. So when we get to that point, please just ask. If I don't automatically send it to y'all, ask.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. The next thing on the agenda is to take the THC survey. Have you all done that? I sent you the link. But it's very interesting stuff. I didn't get any answers, did I? Anyway, there's the... There's the link.
Betty?
Yes.
Betty, is that the survey about the Real Places virtual conference?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yes, I have taken that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Under Preservation and Public Policy, Pat? You're up.
Okay, and Pam and I have talked about a few things that are going on in this area. The first one that's listed on there, the awning at the Sorenson Building or Stealth Air Gallery. New owners have purchased that building, and they are interested in reproducing or replicating an awning that was on the building previously, at least in the historical phase. And they are working with an architect to do that. It is a landmark building, and so there are certain steps they have to take. They are aware of them, and they're willing to do it. And they are... They brought in an architect, and they are preparing drawings to send up to the Texas Historic Commission to get the approval to put that awning in place.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
That's one thing, okay? Then I have two other short ones. The Texas Commission on the Arts has funded a grant. I don't have the dollar amount for it, but for the San Antonio and Aransas Pass Railroad Depot. So that is some additional funding that will be coming in to help get that building back up and functional.
Who did you say that...
That Texas Commission of Arts, or Texas Commission on the Arts, I think is its official title.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the last one is the Rockport Center for the Arts has been working very closely with a number of the agencies for that grant because they want to move the Klein Building. And everything's been good to go, but it's just the grant involves many extra steps. And they have complied with all of those steps. But one of the requirements will be that an Aransas County Historical Commission representative needs to monitor the move when that building is actually being done. So just to kind of put our committee on alert that we will have to have a representative to be monitoring the movement of that building. I don't know if they have to physically be there or just to know that it's being done and that the steps that they have to follow have been taken.
Okay, I will say this, that this is top secret right now. They have not signed the paperwork. So they would very much like for us not to send it off to the Rockport pilot or to our neighbors.
Well, it's about to go live on YouTube.
Is it really?
Yep.
You got...
Public meeting.
I know, but, okay, well, I might be in trouble, Pam.
Yeah. Why is it going live on YouTube?
To satisfy the requirements of a public meeting. Since we're not meeting in a place where the public can join us, we have to put it on YouTube or another public platform for them to watch it.
Okay, well, Betty, I suggest we just contact Louise with that information as soon as the meeting's over. Yeah.
Okay, I can do that. But we do need to figure out who we want to be representative from the commission. Anybody want to volunteer?
Betty, I mean, how much time are we talking about? Do you have any idea?
Well, it's gonna take probably the best part of a day, I would think, to...
I mean, if I have the schedule for whatever is required, I can probably do it.
Okay.
Or we can split up the day if we have to.
Well, when we moved the Brule Johnson House, which is the History Center, right? Did I say that right?
Yeah.
It took the bulk part of a day, but they did have to maneuver a lot of trees. The... There's no trees involved, but there are some bulbouts involved with this, on Austin Street. So it's gonna take some... Yeah, but if you and Brian would like to do that, if everybody agrees, I would like to go ahead and appoint Mark Eschman and Brian Tellis to do the monitoring of that for us.
That sounds like a good plan to me.
Is there any more discussion? Can I have a vote to do that?
Do you want a motion, Betty?
Yes, let's do it as a motion.
Okay, then I will move that Mark Eschman and Brian Tellis serve as the reps required to monitor the move of the Klein Building.
I need a second. I second it, Janet. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? Hearing none. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Linda still on under finance and budget?
Yes.
I skipped markers. Markers.
I did skip markers. Sandy, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to do that.
Can you hear me all right?
We can.
Can everyone hear me? Okay. I went in today to the THC site to see what the latest was on dates and deadlines. And they have closed the markers for 2020 as of June 15th. It was a very fairly short period, and I can't get out of my house right now. So that one went by. The new applications will be due between March 1 and May 15 of 2021. Starting in January of 2021, they're supposed to put up application forms on their site so that we can start to see what's needed. Okay? I also looked up, they had a list, if you want to go there, of which sites, which, I'm sorry, topic sites, whatever, got markers approved for this year. And I counted 25 recorded Texas landmark buildings, 72 subject markers, and 22 Texas historical cemeteries. Okay, I thought you'd like to have that much information. That's what I know for now.
Colin, you got that? Okay. Is that... Sandy, are you through? Is that...
Yes, ma'am. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Linda, under finance and budget, I just want to make a note that the preliminary 2021 budget was presented to Commissioners Court in May.
And it's coming up for a vote. If the vote to approve it and pass the budget will be this coming Monday, Commissioners Court meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Correct, the 14th.
Okay, at this point, Betty, are you planning on attending?
Yes, ma'am.
I am too. So assuming that, right now, I have a doctor's appointment. Assuming I don't have a sinus infection and have a fever, I plan on being there.
Well, I'm not gonna go. I'm just gonna do it via Zoom.
I'm gonna go because I'm just right around the corner, so it's easier for me to just go in person.
Okay, okay. Well, whatever. It's fine. I mean, and so you can answer any questions that they...
Answer any questions when I'm there.
I don't think you're having any, gonna have a problem with the budget for 2021. But I don't want to assume that. Okay. Under Public Relations and Outreach, Mike?
Yeah, you've heard the same old song and dance for the last two or three meetings. But the last thing I heard from Mike Probst was that he will get with me when he's ready to take action on it. He's not there yet.
Let me ask you a question about that. We did so much preliminary work. Does that mean we're gonna have to start over to...
No, that's... My understanding, now, again, it's, he may change this whenever we hear from him again. But my understanding is that he was going to take what we had done and then continue. Because we didn't sell everything, if you recall, or we didn't find a sponsor for every single ad or every marker. But he was gonna use his staff to go ahead and finish that out and then work on billing everybody. So, you know, we'd given him contact information for everybody that we'd promised an ad to. And, you know, again, that's a year, a year since we've started this project. So some of those folks have had their markers earmarked for that long. But so a lot of things could change. But no, he plans on finishing out the ad sales.
Okay, the main thing that we want to make sure he does is that the cover of the marker guide is going to have our sesquicentennial logo on it. So...
Yeah, I did give him that much. He agreed to that. He agreed that it was a good idea. So, but I'll follow up on it, make sure that he does that. And obviously, we'll have final say before anything goes to print.
Well, that'll be great if we can have that. That'll be a big sell for our sesquicentennial program.
I agree. I'll update you if I find out anything else from Mike before the next meeting. But that's all I have right now.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
I found out today by phone call that Barbara Gertner had resigned. And she said she told me months ago, but months ago, I don't...
It's recorded in our minutes. I'll have to go find it, but it is recorded.
Okay, well, I apologize for that. But I work on collections as well. And so there's nothing, unless, Colin, one of the things that we put into the amended budget, which we haven't gotten there yet, is a scanner for our... When we go in and do, because we're gonna be doing the barcodes. And we need to have a scanner, a good scanner to do the barcodes with. So I just want to make sure that that's the only update I have on collections. So I've done some research, and there are some mediocre scanners. And then there's some medium scanners, and then there are scanners that are good scanners. And you don't want to have to necessarily be on top of something in order to scan it.
Yeah. I guess we need to look and see what kind of stuff we're looking to scan. One of the things, if you're gonna be scanning bulky, odd-shaped stuff, you might want a flatbed scanner. But you also might want something that can just do... but you also might want something that can just do a document feeder, but if it's a, um...
I'm talking about the thing you hand and hold it.
That's where I'm looking.
You hold it in your hand.
Oh, oh, you're talking about one of these.
Yes, ma'am, sir. Exactly.
Gotcha, okay, um...
So, let's, let's make a note to look into that, okay? And because we're...
Okay, yeah, I thought you were talking about document scanning, sorry, I was like, I didn't know we were looking at a scanner. Yeah.
That's, that's, yeah, so I'd like to do that with this year's budget.
Okay. Yeah, there, there are definitely some good ones and some bad ones. This one is a couple hundred bucks, I think, this particular model. Um, but yeah, you'll def, will definitely want to look at one that can scan different types of codes, because, um, depending on what, what it is you're wanting to, how complex, I guess, a barcode system you're wanting to come up with, so...
Okay. All right, thank you. Is Sandy Bridges on? I can't... No? Okay, so... So, nothing on cemeteries. Uh, I think they plan to have some meetings at the La Bar Cemetery, but I don't know the dates, so... Uh, anyway, the biggie, Ms. Stranahan, Sesquicentennial.
Okay, well, we're really excited about our Sesquicentennial coming up. 150 years for Aransas County, and that'll be next year in 2021. But we started working on plans with a group that we're calling Partners. We started with a lot of the attractions, so that we would have all of them on board to do different events during a time period next year in 2021. The Partners voted to hold the main celebration June 12th through June 20th. So, that's two weekends with a week in between. So, we would have key things on the weekends that our town visitors, tourists, would enjoy, and then during the week, things that would suit more local interest. Um, we don't have a calendar developed yet, so we haven't really put those in place, but we're just a little less than a year out, so we feel like we're doing really, really well. I think you got the chart, I hope you got the chart, that has the things that we're looking at doing, we're calling them activities, we're calling it History Comes Alive, and there'll be, um, like, five or six exhibits, all of the major attractions, the History Center, Maritime Arts, the Fulton Mansion, Arcad, will all have exhibits that are keyed for the Sesquicentennial. Um, and we'll do banners across those that will cause each one of those to be branded with the Sesquicentennial logo, so that we'll have a calendar and, you know, direct people to those particular venues for more about our Sesquicentennial. And then we'll have vignettes, little short plays that the group that usually does the tour of historic homes will do. There are four, four buildings in town that were here in 1871, at, at the time that Aransas County became a county. And so, those are the four areas that we're targeting, four houses, four homes, we'll have costume docents, and Little Theater is working with her on that, but the Little Theater, who is, you know, moving downtown into the old Western Auto Building, may have something on their own, they may come up with a play that would be appropriate to also celebrate the Sesquicentennial. Hopefully, we're gonna be able to have all of these pieces fall in place. Um, the Chamber wants to promote the stroll through Old Rockport, and the Society is talking about doing a cemetery tour. So, all of these we'll have on a calendar, and it, the trick is gonna be not to have any conflicts, but have enough to keep people really interested. Um, we'll have a kickoff, we're calling it Founder's, the Founder's Day. It'll really be a breakfast, and the Rotary Club is taking on organizing that. Um, a breakfast that would have displays, historic photos, we would have descendants of the founders. So, we'll define a 50-year period, if people were here by 1921, we'll let them be called founders, descendants of founders, and then anybody... Sandy, you're smiling, you can give me your advice on that.
Yeah, my math is going like this.
I know. Anyway, we'll come up with that date, and then also native-born people, but we'll let people be born in Corpus Christi and moved here, you know, early on, so we don't want to get too technical on the native-born, but we'll have different categories like that that people will qualify for. So, we'll make the Founder's Day breakfast to kick off, and it'll be a whole lot of fun. Um, the Rotary Club is working on a venue now, where, how, and all of those details. Um, we, the Commission, and this'll, this'll come up in a minute on the revised budget, but our Commission, our Historic Commission, has enough money that was not spent this year to be able to buy a mark, a mark, a monument, actually, that will match the Centennial marker. Okay, so we had a Centennial marker for the 100-year celebration, and now we have talked with the monument company and have got a comparable piece of marble to put an inscription on for 150 years. So, we're looking at that, we'll see if we dedicate that during this event. Uh, we may have to dedicate it and move it later when the new courthouse gets built, but we'll figure that one out. And then a group is working to do an old-fashioned county fair. Not quite sure how, what this is gonna turn out to be, but something like a cake walk or a pie throwing, I mean, I don't know exactly what they're gonna come up with, but the Lions Club, the 4H are working on this, AgriLife, the Children's Coalition, and the Connie Hager Cottage Sanctuary. So, this will be aimed more at children and families. Okay, so this would probably follow the Founder's Day breakfast on that Saturday, unless they're really ambitious enough to do a Saturday, Sunday. I don't, I don't know, we need to get that committee together to talk about where they're going with this. Um, and then we have what we're calling anchor events, fireworks, the first Saturday, Market Days would be the next weekend, and a parade. Um, we're, need to find somebody who will pick up on organizing that parade. Um, we're also planning, and have already got two videographers ready in case we still are stuck in this COVID situation, and we have to go, you know, distancing and live streaming instead of crowds of people. So, we're looking and planning already about what we'll do in that case. Um, in any case, we want to have a lot of it recorded, so Kai Husak and Becky Storey are on, on guard to help us with that. The Chamber will be working on the outreach, we hope we have the marker guide, and the Historical Society is doing the calendar of historic photos, again, with a special few pages on the Sesquicentennial and on the Centennial. So, that publication will be featuring both of those. Uh, Kristy Morgan, who does the shop at Fulton Mansion, is in charge of merchandise. It's gonna be pretty simple, but we'll have a commemorative coin, mugs, flags, coasters, fish sharks, and then, um, the high school art teacher is working with students to design a t-shirt by students. So, um, all of those things are floating out there. If there are any of these committees that you'd like to work with, any of these partners, we'd appreciate that. We will, we have a budget of about $30,000, 10,000 of that is for fireworks. So, we really, we're not, we're planning on most things being self-sufficient, funding themselves. We don't see a lot of outlay, the major other portion of that, about 8,000 for publicity. So, we'll try to advertise, um, print, and of course, heavy on the web, as well as trying to get some publicity out to other communities, San Antonio, Austin, Houston, and the Valley. So, so the major costs are gonna be fireworks and publicity. Um, and then Debbie Williams from Charter Bank is heading up the fundraising, and we set categories of 1,000, 750, 500, or 100. Um, so, there we are, we're that far along with the planning. We started, gosh, we started a year ago, didn't we, Betty?
November.
Yeah, a year ago, and so we just, of course, had to drop it, and then we picked it up and have recently had about three meetings. So, we've been meeting every other week until we get it structured enough that we can back off and let each of the different partners develop their own piece of this. Um, the second thing that we're gonna do, and you all had a copy of this too, Linda worked up a proclamation for us, because we want to have a, what the Chamber of Commerce calls a launch. Okay, so, we needed to have an announcement of, of the Sesquicentennial, so we could start fundraising, we could start getting more volunteers involved. So, um, right now, we're planning to go to Commissioners' Court on October 12th, if they're meeting then, that is Columbus Day, if Columbus Day's happening, I'm not sure. Colin, do you know that?
Have a holiday, county does not have a holiday for that day.
Okay, so 12th is good for it. So, we'll have the proclamation read, um, and this will be our launch. We'll have a, you know, a press release ready, and this will be our launch for the Sesquicentennial. So, we'll get that started, and then people will sort of forget about it probably until next year, but that's okay, we'll at least get it going. Linda did a really good job with this, and it is, uh, the, the, our county Historic Commission is essentially one of the key partners in this. And the second paragraph in this proclamation reads, well, you had it, actually, we sent it to you too, but, "Whereas Aransas County values its rich history, the Aransas County Historic Commission, Aransas County Historical Society, and the Friends of the History Center strive to preserve that rich history." Blah, 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 blah. Okay, so, um, we feel like this will be a real good punch there to get our Sesquicentennial started. Okay, any questions, comments?
Well, we've been working, but Pam's been working the hardest, but I promise you, it's really come along. We've been meeting, like she said, every couple of weeks, and we've got a core group that's pretty incredible, so, uh, they're all excited about it and, and working hard to, to get it, get it done. The next thing on the agenda is to discuss, approve, and disapprove amended 2020 budget. Uh, I sent it out to everyone, and Sandy Garrison has said, since we are not doing markers this year, for many, many reasons, uh, she has relinquished her budget to put and apply it to the monument for the Sesquicentennial. So, that's, if you all have it with you and are looking at it. The, the main changes is that some of the things, Cemetery Workshop, we took that money and put it toward education outreach, which does include the Sesquicentennial. And the Sesquicentennial merchandise, out of that, we have applied for a nonprofit 501(c)(3). I got the paperwork back from Secretary of State yesterday, and today I sent the assumed name, which will be Aransas County Sesquicentennial. So, that'll be our website, it'll be Aransas County 150th, or 150. And, uh, so, so part of that $1,777 is going to come part of the pay, the cost of the 501(c)(3). I'm hoping, uh, it's gonna stay less than $600, leaving us $1,000 or, or more on the purchase of merchandise for the Sesquicentennial. We've got to start somewhere, and that we've, we've met with Kristy, like Pam said, we've got some beautiful mugs that we, we like, we're gonna do flags, so, uh, we're, you know, we're moving right along, so, anyway, just wanted to, but, but does anybody have any questions about the amended budget?
Um, I, I think what, what this is gonna do is give us a little bit of funding to start right away, um, because we can guarantee that we can get this monument and then get some of the merchandise that's classic, that we know that we want. It's not all of the merchandising budget, but it would, it would give us a jumpstart on that as well. And, uh, it seems like those are legitimate things to spend the Historic Commission budget on.
Any other conversation or discussion? I'm gonna call for the vote. Do you want a motion? I do, sorry, I gotta call for the vote after that.
Okay, so moved to amend the budget as stated.
I'll second. Colin?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? I just wanted you to know what we were doing. Okay, uh, under old businesses, are there any additional old business to be brought up before the Commission at this time? Okay. Under new business, I noted that the 2021 Railways Conference, scheduled in February 3rd to through the 5th, is gonna be a virtual conference, so we don't have to drive anywhere or get a hotel room yet. So, it's, I, what, you're, is it costly?
That's not as fun.
I think it's $400, is it not? But it was part of the survey we filled out, and I said, I said 300, what did you say?
For what cost would I be willing to pay for it? I wasn't in favor of a virtual conference.
Okay. Okay.
I think a lot of the value of that came in talking with other people in the rooms or when we were at the tables, in having meals, that's just tremendous.
Breakout conferences was what I got a lot out of, and where you sat with just a smaller group rather than just the whole group listening, so, I got, I liked that, I really enjoyed it. So, I have to agree with you, but if that's their decision, I don't guess we have, have much...
No, they just asked my opinion.
Yes, me too. All right.
No, I mean, they, they were just asking for us to complete that survey, so I did.
Oh, thank you. Uh, South Texas Historical Association meetings have been canceled for 2020, and so they'll take another look at it in 2021 and keep us posted. Uh, is there any other old, new business to come before the...
Well, I might mention, because you usually talk about the Tropical Texas outings, they started, uh, last month, I think, with a virtual one, and they're offering another virtual tour again in September.
You know the, oh, next?
I think it's the, I'm looking at my calendar, I think it's the 15th, yes. It's next Tuesday.
Okay. Do you know what time?
Well, the one before just was from 10:00 to 11:00, just for one hour, it was very good. And I'm thinking that this has the same parameters. They're gonna do the Asian Culture Museum in Corpus Christi, and then some more vignettes from the Corpus Christi Museum of Science and History. They did one or two of those last time, and it was very helpful and, and interesting. But you need to get your response back to Nancy Devini if you intend to participate, so she can send you the link.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that, I'm sorry I left it off. Okay, the next meeting, November 18th, 2020, and it'll probably be a Zoom again. And so, do I have a motion? To adjourn?
Linda Haynes, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
Thank you, Pam.
This is Pam.
Alrighty, thank you, anything else? We're done? Have a good evening, guys.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
See y'all later.
Thank you.
Bye. Very good. Bye, Kim.